Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming tonight to the work session in preparation for our August Barrow County School Board meeting. We're short a couple of people. Mr. Bailey is still not with us, probably missed another meeting. Maybe a couple of the board members on vacation, so we'll inform at least, so we'll be able to take care of some business. The invocation and pledge will be Ms. Stevens next week. We'll have the presentation of colors by the Wyandotte Barrow High School ROTC. We'll approve the minutes, we'll approve the agenda, we'll go over some committee reports. Superintendent will have some recognition. That's good. This time, we don't have any visitors or requests appear for the board. Dr. Green?
Yes, the communications report is there for future reviews. Unless you have questions, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Houston?
Good evening. All I have for you tonight is the invoices paid between 10,000 and 24,999. The first one is for Stevens Gymnadium is paid out of the general fund, $24,090. It's for gym floor refinishing, district-wide. Next one is Amplify Education, paid out of ESER 3, $14,925. 750 licenses for Amplify, and that's district-wide. Hyman is paid out as consolidated funds for $11,739.70, and it's all grade-level support instructional materials, and that's for Bramlett. CDW Government is paid out of the Perkins Grant, $13,409 for 30 laptops for marketing, and that's at Sims Academy. H-Con International was paid out of the general fund for $24,005.91 for student furniture, and that's district-wide. Fire and light safety paid out of the general fund, $13,702.50 for annual fire alarm inspections, district-wide. Tech Office paid out of state federal funds, $18,915.96 for three interactive panels, and that's for our special education preschool. IntoY Inc. paid out of state federal funds, $14,073.80 for our license renewals, that's 14 of them from map manipulatives, and that's district-wide. Ushasaw, sorry, general fund, paid out of the general fund, $13,865, and that's for the FTE tracker software for this year 2023, and that's district-wide. Yellow Folder paid out of the general fund, $12,864, and that's for our human resource file maintenance system, our license, and that's district-wide. Interesting Studio paid out of the general fund, $12,490.98 for content management system for 19 sites, and that's paid, that's for all our sites, that'd be district-wide. Tools Forever Inc. paid out of the general fund, $24,999 for technology safety license renewal, that's district-wide. And our Middle Georgia Risa is paid out of ESER 3, $13,500 for ESER readiness grant dyslexia endorsements, so that would be district-wide also. So a lot on this this month. Y'all have any questions? All right, thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Good evening. We'll talk about two things tonight in our report. One of those, the first of those is our FY '24 State Catalina application. It's hard to believe, but Bethany Hammond Elementary School, Catalina Elementary School, in FY '24, they will reach their 20th birthday, which allows us to draw down funds to improve those schools. And so this will be things like we've been doing these summer, paint, floors, lights, the classroom cameras, HVAC, vestibule improvements, and those sorts of things. So it allows us to continue that renovation process at those two locations. We'd also like to improve our application for Bassett 2. We talked about this at some length, but we have a need for additional high school classrooms, and we have funding available at the state, and so our master plan at the Innovation Campus calls for an addition for Bassett 2 to come online. That would be in the fall of '24 that we're open, we start work in the fall of '22. And so these are the things we'd like to apply for, this is an item of innovation, and we'll bring this back to you. As an action item, wants to say reviews our application, they have to bring it back to you for a vote, but we would expect to draw down over $60 million to help us from the state to make these improvements. So that's come back to you in a month or two, but that's what we'd like to apply for this summer. For our construction, actually, before we start construction improvement update, I'd like to just point out, I think our schools are in great shape as we get ready to start this next school year. Our grounds, our buildings, they really look good. Been out in them numerous times this summer, a lot of hard work from our maintenance staff, our studio staff, vendors, they've just done a tremendous job, and really excited about the shape we're in to start the school year. So I want to mention that before we get into our photos here. So, one. Okay, so Bramlett, Kennedy, and Yargo. Particularly Bramlett and Kennedy, we turned these schools upside down. We renovated the two sore additions because that's where we had safe money, but we also did stuff in the single short portion of buildings as well, and outside also, as you can see, we put a steel cut on the plateboards, we put fences around the playgrounds. We did the vestibules, the lights, the floors, paint. There are a few guys I'd like to recognize, and there's so many people that were part of this, it's hard to kind of pull a few people out, but I didn't do that. Charles Black Construction just did a tremendous job for us this summer. So much work in these schools in less than a two-month period, it's really something what they accomplished. And these are young guys, Nathan, Nate Dogg, we got Nick H for most of these guys. Nathan, Nate Dogg Lewis, second summer with us. He attends Kennesaw State University. Big Will Mitchell, this is his first summer with us, who bred with BGA this December, with Moni. He's got several nicknames, some I won't say here, but he's our commander in chief on the worn carpet. Give him that name right now. Third summer with us, he attends LSU, and the reason I'm saying where they go to school is these are young guys. I mean, they're 20, 21, 22-year-old guys, they're managing this project, these projects. You know, they're not just out there babysitting, they're involved in the work, they're managing the subcontractors. They just do a tremendous job. They show up, they work hard, they care, they're smart, they're driven, so we're fortunate to have guys like that here, and really proud of them. The last guy I'm going to mention is Jacob Boyle. He's the project manager and sort of glue that pulls all this together. He's doing the paperwork, the administrative end of things, communicating with principals. Greg has referred to him as a robot because he doesn't forget anything, he's always on top of every detail, he's just, he's super at what he does, and by the way, he's enjoying the track, so he's all right.
And he did all that this summer while he's expecting a baby, so he may be having a baby tonight.
Yeah. So that's the elementary school renovations, the Bramlett, Kennedy, and Yargo, they're looking really good, really excited about all that's been accomplished out there. This is our pod unit out at Bassett campus, 16 classroom pod, instant classroom, whatever you want to call it, less than a year. You know, we have a new building on site there, doing a large part of the hard work of Chris Bridges, and we call him Big Country. A tremendous job out there by Grail and Chris, appreciate all his hard work. And then do elementary school, can't forget the new elementary school, I could miss all this, but Isrock and all, got the slab board, steel going up, block roofed out, as you see there, the mechanical electrical plumbing trade are in there working now. So, you know, with everything else, kind of got in that summer rush, this steady pace has continued out of the elementary school, and just doing really well out there also. May already scroll through those, but some other things that we've been doing this summer, of course trailers, and again, this is Charles Black Construction. And, but we relocated nine units, we brought nine new units into the county, and put those up with landings, ramps, stairs, and, you know, we got to throw IT into the mix for that, and their hard work and maintenance for getting their electric, fire alarm, intercom, market boards, tack boards, Jennifer Houston in furniture, my goodness, how everybody keeps up with all this, but Judy Roberts, Big Randy Norris, Kevin, our folks just do a tremendous job, so it's team effort, and accomplished great things this summer. At the bottom there, that's our Ag Building out of Highway 53, conservation property, and I wish we had a before picture, I probably got one of my cameras somewhere, but my phone, but we took, Charles Black did, and took it on building, and, you know, we call it, let's just call it Pig, but new roof, new paint, they're gunning it out now. So we have a building there, we're going to have it a lot less time, a lot less money that our students and our staff can use, and is really excited about that too, start to see those kind of improvements take place, and we'll be able to kind of push the gas on those a little bit more as we get into what we call the off-season here in the fall and whatnot, but want to share those pictures with you as well. And Greg, miss anything, anything I don't want to use.
Joe, I just want to say kudos to you and your team for building those relationships with Charles Black and Grail Construction, because that's why you're getting that work done in two months, because we've worked with them now for several years, and, you know, the fact that they're letting these young guys come in and be project managers, and it's just great, great teamwork.
Yeah, it's a team building thing, and we do have an excellent team, from our own staff to the vendors, it does, they did it.
Yeah, if you had to train a new company, I mean, it'd be a nightmare.
Any questions?
I'm gonna give one more shout-out, great leadership in that department. So many moving parts everywhere, but to get things done, the rate that you all get things done rises and falls on leadership. Campbell and Greg, the rest of the leadership team just doing an amazing job, just making sure they have what they need and keeping the fire lit. Just, I think, you know, when I look at those timeframes you give me, and I think, there's no way, you know, the first blush is always like, really? And, but then I know, yeah, it'll happen.
I appreciate that. These guys are the best, they put it on the table, it's like it did, but.
Those gym floors look great.
I love those, yeah.
Joe, you know I've been one of those boys on those gyms for like 20 some odd years here. Glad to see that happen.
We're gonna have them all done here, just another year too. Yeah. We had a few people in the schools kind of snuck in on us a little bit early, and they came out of there thinking, wow, man, are we going to be done? Yeah. So, look, there's seven, eight days in the summer, you don't know how much you can get done with this. Yeah.
Tomorrow, you'll be amazed. My secret plan was those young guys, you saw that, I sent off and went to hotel rooms, told them they could go.
They've been over eight hours this week, right?
Eight hours last week.
We tried to get here tonight, but they, they didn't want to get them to be proud like this, we let them off the.
Thank you, great job. Dr. Moten? Okay. Ms. Beggs?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda, we've got some old business. We've got the new policy, JRB Parents' Bill of Rights, we're going to remove that from public review and approve tonight after the executive session, and we've got new policy divisive concepts complaint resolution process, we will vote on that tonight after executive session. New business, Remind Renewal, Shendly?
Good evening, great to see y'all. Wanted to take just a moment and share some information about Remind. I'm going to share my screen here with you. There you go, can you see that?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, thank you, wonderful. So, if you recall, we, Remind is a two-way communication platform that we adopted in April of 2020. If you'll remember, March 16th of 2020 is when we closed schools, and we had already been looking at a two-way communication platform to enable teachers to communicate more directly with both parents and their students, and so we expedited this so that we could have it for teachers to use while they were teaching from home for that spring. And so the Remind communication tool removes barriers and it helps teachers to connect with families. So the first thing it does is it sends, you can send class announcements, and so this is a one-way communication where a teacher can push out an announcement to students, to parents, or to both. And so what's wonderful is that those receiving the messages can decide how they want to be notified, so you can get it on the Remind app with a push notification, an SMS text message, a desktop notification, an email message, all or none of the above, you can decide how you want to receive those notifications. And teachers can send text, images, pictures, and even website links, and it connects with Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom. And so if you'll remember back when Twitter made news, when it first started, that they had 140 character limit, we don't have that problem, you can send up to 10,000 characters in a message. You can also send SMS text messages two-way, so a teacher can communicate directly with the student over the age of 13, and back and forth with the parent as well. And so what's really wonderful is that there is a translation tool built into this feature, and so if a parent primarily speaks Spanish, the teacher will send the message in English, it gets translated, the parent receives it in Spanish, when they respond in Spanish, it goes back to the teacher in English. So this has really increased the one-to-one communication that is possible using text messages. Plus, we also know that text message is a very popular way to communicate these days, which makes it effective. In addition, teachers have the ability to make a phone call without giving away their private phone number, and so messages from Mrs. Smith will come from one number, maybe it's 5555555, while messages from Mr. Jones will come from a different number, but it's always that same number with the student and parent. So the teacher has the ability to call a parent, the parent can call the teacher back, and teachers have the ability to turn off and on when they are receiving calls. So Remind enables them to have those private conversations with parents, often when a teacher doesn't have a phone in their room, it makes it easy for them to do. What's also wonderful about Remind is you can see message results. So as a teacher, once they send a message, they can get a summary, they can check their delivery rates, they can see who received the message and who read the message, you can also check for any errors, and what's also wonderful is it provides an additional layer of security for everyone. Any communication that is happening is being recorded in our district account, and if there was any type of investigation or accusation, we can go and pull those records so that we have that on file. And so this has been very popular, just in the last 12 months. So this is from May 10th, 2021, until May 11th, 2022, so last school year essentially. Our teachers and staff sent over 12 million messages. You can see here that the blue messages are the conversations, so those are the ones happening two-way, and the green in the chart there shows the announcements are one-way messages. And so these are being sent by teachers, principals, media specialists, counselors, coaches, speech-language pathologists, band directors, et cetera. Anyone that has a roster has access to this, so it has become extremely popular and heavily utilized over the past few years that we have had it. And so with that, to renew Remind for the 2022-23 school year, it will cost $29,990. This is based on a $2.11 per student cost with, based on 14,200 enrollments. We have an extremely well-negotiated contract with Remind, we have a max annual increase of 10%, and in fact, based on anecdotal things I've heard from Remind staff as well as other districts, we're paying about 50% the rate as other school systems. So we are in a very good position with them, and it's a very well-used tool. Are there any questions I can answer?
Who negotiated the rate?
I did.
Kudos, great job. So you're telling me basically that we're sending that many messages and it only costs us that amount of money per student?
Yes.
That's definitely one of the best deals going.
I think so.
I love this tool, I use it in my office, and it's not the same company, but it has turned our communication around, it's a great tool.
Absolutely. When we send text message, SMS reminders, or surveys out, we see an immediate response because people are responding to text messages faster than they get to their email, and so it really helps when you need to get in touch with families.
Now, Shendly, what happens in a situation where if it comes through, like it's a phone number that the parent, that's not in the contact list, and they don't know it, and they've got a block on there to prevent spam, then what happens?
So there are a couple of different ways. Teachers are communicating with families on other platforms to get them set up on Remind, so hopefully they'll realize that. If they have it blocked, they can still go into the code, into the app, and enter the code for that class and get added that way, so there are multiple ways to make that work.
Okay.
Consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Shendly. Mr. Sinclair? Good to see you back in person.
Thank you. I'm going to ask this ground treat to negotiate on my contracts report. The Incident IQ is the solution that we use in ITS for the last few years for our health desk ticketing system, it does health desk ticketing inventory, other health desk management systems, it is due for renewal. It's feature-rich, it's got good reporting, inventory management, knowledge base and so forth, everything you want out of a health desk management system that's very well-supported, we've been very happy with the product for the last few years. It's sold directly by the manufacturer, sole source, and they are not adversely listed in the SAMDOG database. The cost is $28,588 under the actus budget, and we're asking for approval to renew it for the next couple of years with a maximum 3% price increase per year allowed in that renewal. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of Incident IQ from sole source provider, Incident IQ, in the amount of $28,588, and authorizing yearly renewal for the next few years contingent upon pricing remaining within the 3% of the previous year.
John, you said this was sole sourced, but did we put this out for bids, or did you just do this because we liked what they did?
Well, when we first went out and looked around this, we needed to make off and try to log the systems, and then when we signed this one, it was the one that had the features that we wanted, we asked those to use it, then we pursued the person, and then sole source was an option at that time. It's never made a deal.
Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, next.
Thank you. The district's web content filtering solution is also due for renewal. The manufacturer of the product, LightSpeed, sells the solution to us through sole source vendor, Howard Technologies in Laurel City. We have done significant business with Howard in the past, they are not adversely listed in the SAMDOG database. The cost is $71,250 per ITS funds. Again, we're asking for permission for renewal for the next few years as well, with a maximum 3% price increase in that permission. The superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of LightSpeed web filtering solution from sole source provider, Howard Technology Solutions, in the amount of $71,250, and authorizing yearly renewal for the next few years contingent upon pricing remaining within 3% of the previous year.
Questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Wibley? Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. So the first item to present is regarding Goalbook, and this is an item that we are looking to renew, just wanted to throw that piece out there. So a key goal of the Barrow County Schools Special Education Department, as a part of the Teaching and Learning Department, is moving beyond individualized education plan compliance and to improve classroom instruction through individualized learning for students with disabilities. Goalbook is a five-step instructional design process that facilitates present levels of performance, individualized goals, progress monitoring, and individualized instructional strategies. Goalbook is a tool that helps teachers provide standard-based, universally-designed instruction that is research-based, accessible, and engaging for a diverse classroom of learners. 150 licenses were purchased for the 21-22 school year, and data collected shows that high usage and approval amongst special education teachers, as well as improvements in individual education plan goals, objectives, and progress monitoring. So, they love it. For the recommendation, the superintendent recommends that Barrow County School System purchase 150 Goalbook toolkit licenses to provide guidance to special education teachers working with specialized student populations to vary the levels of instructional support and to individualize their learning. The cost is $75,863 to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. For financial impact for the 22-23 school year, a Goalbook license will be provided to each special education teacher at $505.75 per license for 150 teachers at a total cost of $75,863. The total price also includes ongoing professional development and training, consultation and analytic review services, technical support, access to ongoing webinars, and dedicated Goalbook team members to work in partnership with district and school implementation. The resource was not met out due to the software being sole sourced. The purchase will automatically renew for the 23-24 and 24-25 school years. Does anyone have questions about Goalbook?
So the total is $75,863?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Consent agenda? Okay.
Okay. All right, so next up is regarding Medical Provider Services Incorporated, which is a Medicaid billing service. Since 2010, the Barrow County School System has been utilizing or utilize a web-based Medicaid billing system for school-based speech-language, occupational, and physical therapy services. However, last school year, billing services were provided through GoSolutions Incorporated. With GoSolutions and FY '22, we generated $163,228.47. The company was paid $13,629.35, which was approximately 8% of funds that were generated. That left $149,599.12 to be deposited in the general funds. Prior to last school year, FY '21, we contracted through Medical Provider Services Incorporated to bill for these therapy services, generating $324,695.58. Because Medical Provider Services Incorporated charges 12% of paid claims, we paid them $38,963.47, which left $285,732.12 to be deposited in the general funds. Through this experience, what we have learned is that although Medical Provider Services Incorporated charges a higher rate for their service, they also have a more efficient system resulting in less denied claims, which increased our revenue. Medical Provider Services Incorporated would be responsible- Medical Provider Services Incorporated would be responsible for training speech language pathologists, physical therapists, and occupational therapists to use their web-based data entry system. And they would also be responsible for obtaining physician referrals, filing claims, and assisting with audits. The superintendent recommends that Barre County School System enter a contract with Medical Provider Services Incorporated as our Medicaid billing service. The cost will be twelve percent of total reimbursements from Medicaid funds. The contract will renew yearly as long as we are satisfied with services and the cost remains at twelve percent of paid claims. So for financial impact, it would be up to sixty thousand per year dependent on claims submitted. And just for a little background, how we use these Medicaid funds. They are generated through Medical Provider Services Incorporated, and they would be used to purchase equipment such as standards and standards and changing tables and supplies for students with disabilities. It will also be used to purchase licenses, evaluation materials, and professional learning for speech language pathologists as well as one-to-one nurses or contract speech language pathologists as needed. These purchases are necessary to support our students with disabilities and will essentially come at no cost to the district due to the revenues generated by Medical Provider Services Incorporated.
Sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Well, I do have some questions on this. Exactly what do they do other, I mean, do they other than putting the, the bill, I guess they input the, we send them the claim, they input all that information in. Make sure the diagnosis code or whatever the stuff is, is correct.
So they do a lot of the legwork behind the scenes, getting the plan of care and all that information for all the students. And then the folks who are providing the services, like the physical therapist, occupational therapist, speech language pathologist, they enter the data into the web-based claim. So basically showing what services were rendered and the amount of time. And then what they do is they are able to then take that information and shoot it out.
That's why they sit and hit a button, hit a button, and it goes out to Medicaid.
Yes.
Now, if the claim gets denied, do they work the claim?
Do they what?
Work the claim. If it gets denied, do they find out why that?
They, yes, they would inform us and we would work together to figure out what was the issue. You know, did we maybe not receive some kind of paperwork? Is there something that we have to try to clean up? So they are very involved in the process and they keep us up to date continuously so that we're able to jump in and troubleshoot.
So we're having less problems with this company, I would say, I'm, I'm getting those, like getting denials back than we did on the other.
And the overall picture, we use them since two thousand and ten. Last year was the first time that we deviated and we went to Goal, or I'm sorry, Goalbook. We went to Go Solutions because it was cheaper on the front end.
And they just didn't work at a start.
And we thought that it was going to be another, another swap essentially. But when it all came out on the watch, what we saw is there was way more work on all of our staff who they're already working so hard to provide new services and stay on top of things. But they're having double work and we're making less money.
And that's what I'm saying. If you've got somebody, because I used to do this, it's my, and I didn't know Bill probably understands. He should have a state forum. So I used to do this for a living. So if you've got somebody that's doing all that and you're, and our people aren't having to get involved as much, you're seeing less than ours, and our people aren't getting involved. Like Bill said, it's a no-brainer to do that.
I was hoping you would think that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Consent agenda? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're asking the superintendent to recommend that continue to use contractors ACS, FQS, and FY twenty-three for labor support. They were used at various schools, FY twenty-two, to provide support for our program that performed well. These contractors will be paid, are paid at the same rate as employees, primary staffing. The expected financial impact is making this operation funds the amount of four hundred thousand ACS, three hundred thousand for FQS. We brought these two particular vendors to last year and asked for approval to use them. And we're doing that again. It's just the slavery market continues to be challenging for us. And so it's just part of an approach to really do anything we can to try to support our staffing efforts. So these folks along with primary staffing, we've even got Barre County School System employees as a pilot program that we're gonna be using. There's an in-house studio team there. So we feel like the combination of those things can give us our best chance of being successful.
Where are you getting the in-house folks at the hospital?
Advertise the positions over the summer.
Consent agenda? Thank you, sir. Mr. Ayers?
I just have one blank.
You usually have six or seven when you come see us.
This is kind of, this is both an upgrade and an update at the same time. Basically, the superintendent recommends standard new software service script with Tyler Technologies for migration to traverse from first trans, routing software, one-time fee, going to seven thousand five forty-four. The top annual fee of nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-sixty-one for slosh funds. What this does is it helps in several ways. Our server, we house that server here. IT has to maintain it, do whatever they need to do to keep it going. Several years old, I don't know, I guess six years old.
A little more than seven, yeah.
Yeah, so it's passed, it's passed its slightly expectancy. This is totally web-based deal. We don't have to deal with security on that, all those, a lot of extra features that we use. Plan personnel, some of the dashboard features and stuff, make it easier to draw boundary lines for addition and stuff. I'm thinking, right, when they did the demo, as far as the routing side of it, they updated that. There are several other features for that as well. Just won't get into all of that. It's more of a transportation piece at that point, but just a good thing all the way around. Kind of gives us the speed and I have all the concerns we have right now. The system's getting a little glitchy, so, but it makes us nervous especially right now with students following. So financially, back to the yearly amounts, again, twenty-seven, five forty-four. Then you go next year on twenty-four, twenty-five, you're looking at eighteen, nine eighty-eight, and twenty-five, twenty-six, nineteen, nine thirty-seven. As with everything else, once it comes due, we'll look at it, evaluate, see if we need to do something different with the contract. That's, that's what we're planning this right now.
Questions?
Is there a reason it goes down to eighteen and then it goes back up to nineteen?
Yes, I, I don't know. I don't know what, what affects that part of it. I have to break into the grander parts of the service agreement. They're doing it for two hundred buses. None, nothing's changed. I'm not sure what the difference is from that year to the next.
I mentioned some of that. Some of the upfront cost is inverted versus trans to, to traversa. There's a beef of that, and then the years two or three are just payments.
Year three, I'm sure.
I think, I think what they do is some of the things you're probably seeing in the first year, probably kick to the very beginning of it. I'm not sure I can break that out.
I was just noticing that it went down the second year, but it went back up the third year. That's why I was wondering why it went back up.
I'm sorry, I had that. I didn't break it down that far. A lot of labor's due, but I need that.
So, so this is a three-year contract?
Yes, three. They broke it out in three.
Okay, and the first year is twenty-seven, five forty. This is a one-time fee, but that includes the, the first year, right?
Right, right. That's the immigration section. You get everything going on. That's their people taking care of, you know, time and a lot of our.
So in all probability, it was eighteen thousand, second year, and it goes up. They just built in.
Built in an increase, yeah.
An increase, like everybody else.
Consent agenda? Yes. Thank you, sir. And Dr. Moten?
Good evening. I have the HMH Growth Measure New Rule. We use the HMH, which is Hope Amendment Hardcore Student Growth Measure. We use it for English Language Arts. Excuse me. It is a state-required assessment under the L four GA Grant, the Literacy for Learning, Living, and Leading Grant. The assessment is given three times a year for students in grades three through eleven at our six participating schools. Armored Elementary, State of Elementary, Bear Creek Middle, Russell Middle, Westside Middle, and Wyandell High School. The data is used for instructional decision-making, to match students with appropriate texts, and to measure student growth. There are some supporting documents attached there for your review, including the sole source letter and quote. The financial impact is four thousand four hundred and seventeen student licenses at a price of six dollars each for a total of twenty-six thousand five hundred two dollars from the L four GA grant funds that we receive annually. Based on this information, the superintendent recommends authorizing the purchase of the Student Growth Measure from HMH or Hope Amendment Hardcore, the sole source provider, for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Are there any questions?
Consent agenda? Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty. We're moving to executive session now. We're gonna discuss and deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee for to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. See?
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you, everybody. We'll be back.